I think it is.
I'm fine, she could sit there.
They are calling the meeting to order. First off, please lead us.
Go on, you want to lead us?
Agents.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, you can, it would be easier for you to look at it.
Sandy, come on over, you're over there in the far side.
Yeah. Right here, Betty.
Betty, you can either sit over there or right here.
It's that different.
Over there?
You have a sign up sheet, Don?
Don, do you have a sign up sheet? Okay. And is this the board or everybody? I'm talking about, you want the guests to sign up or you want just the board?
I'll, we can put it on the same sheet. I don't see.
So, thank everybody for coming tonight, got notice. Present.
Yeah, did it again.
Present.
And these are for changing. Brent, these are for changing.
I, I'll, yeah.
It would.
Yes, if you just.
Kevin, I get the Kevin a lot, so it'll be Kevin McHugh.
Excuse me, just a bit of an explanation first and why we're here. We met with the council last Monday and attempted to present changes to the ordinance for their approval. And as a result, we ended up with quite a few questions. Don discovered afterwards that they had the wrong document. A wrong version, they had the right document, wrong version. So it kind of complicated things a little bit. Appreciate all the help from all the folks that participated in trying to answer the questions. What's interesting is a lot of what we did was reorganization. It wasn't changing specifications or verbiage or what a lot of his work Ed did with Don, reorganizing the document, plus what changes we made. And the table was probably the biggest example of the changes we made. So with that, we took away quite a few notes, well, at least a page, page and a half. Everybody have that, by the way? It's kind of the feedback from the meeting.
So, just put on there tonight, so you would have just seen that tonight.
It's a new document, it's headed.
Very much in draft form.
The draft, right, November 26th. Update regard and proposed zoning ordinance amendments. And that was, Brent reminded us today, I think, that we didn't have that in the packet. So I hope everybody has it. So the intent is to go ahead and go through the document. If you can visualize the document we presented, which I call an iteration, had a lot of strikeouts, a lot of movement, and a lot of red lines, and a lot of red words, and all that good stuff. And the intent tonight is come up with a document that we want to put back in front of them next Monday for their second view and perhaps approval as our presentation. So it's the cleaned up document and not this marked up document. So what we'd like to do tonight is go through and, and I want to move us through as fast as I can because I know you all got things to do and I know it's a, it was a short notice meeting. So what I'd like to do is go through page by page. If there's not an issue on that page, let's move on. Okay? And all intent, all intent, or all said and done, our intent tonight is to, at the board, to approve signing it back to the council for their approval. We can talk about changes, but for the most part, I don't see a lot of changes, if any change. It's just understanding what the document looks like, we all agree, and we vote to go ahead and move it on to them for their review next week. And again, I appreciate you all coming in short notice. The intent was to get that work done and get it back to them as soon as possible. So with that said, let's go ahead with the document. And I'm just going to go with page by page. If there's not an issue, then let's move on. Look, by the way, on table content, Don attempted to take the table content as it was, right, Don?
Yes.
Pretty much as it was, and change the page number. So if anybody has seen an issue, let's come back to that after we get through the document, make sure we clean that up.
Any formatting suggestions before the end of this meeting that people see, I'll try to get them corrected.
Well, I say already, Brent brought up a point. I said, Rick, if you look at the table content, shouldn't they start over again with each article? While the existing document does not do that, we discovered that, it goes in line. Our intent is not to change that format. Maybe it's something we take on as a project later on, but leave that alone and make sure it jives with the page numbers. So, I'm moving on to page, which, there is Article One, General. Any issues on that page? And Don, I'll be looking to you to, you know, stop if there's, if there's something that we're missing, okay? Yeah, I'm moving on to page five. I'm moving right along, so stop me if you think I'm going too fast. Page six. Page seven. And again, not to get off on a tangent, but I don't think the council understood that we reorganized, that we didn't change it, we reorganized it. There are places we did change, and they're made aware of that, but most of it was not changed, it was reorganized.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note, in the table of contents, as a result of the council's conversation, under L, under 13L, Article 413L, I did add the language. It's previously said timber harvesting field, and now timber harvesting is no longer struck out and it's regulated by the main board service added, and that was a result of their conversation.
Thank you. And that shows up again in the text also. Page nine?
Seven.
Seven?
Five. This is where we're going to refer to in the table.
Yeah, that's the, the height of the.
That's the height.
Yes, that's on six. Seventy-five feet is on six double I.
Yeah.
That's the seventy-five, everybody understand that we're talking about reference to seventy-five foot setback and a hundred foot setback on non-conforming structures and what the height restriction is.
That's.
So that's double I, which is the seventy-five foot. And the next page over is hundred foot setback, which is the four. Top of the page, where it's twenty-five feet. And it's something we've, we've talked about, in fact, we just had three cases that dealt with non-conforming properties being rebuilt and what the height restriction was, Don?
Just going to observe that, so when you get to the table, my reference back is just to Article 3C, so you want me to drill down more into specifically the.
I would specifically say C1 double, excuse me, C1, C double I and four. And that would.
No, just a note on this, this is pretty much verbatim out of Chapter 1000. Oh, okay, yeah.
We've had, Ed, we've had some cases recently that kind of missed it. Don brought us back to it. And we had three cases just recently that were non-conforming near the water in the last meeting.
I missed it for one. Don caught it before the meeting, the applicant missed it. So it was in the ordinance, it just wasn't called out.
And if you look at the table, it talks about thirty-five feet, so it kind of leads you down a wrong path.
Oh, well, yeah, that's the general. Probably about twenty-five.
So, Don, you're all set there? Where was I, nine? Anything on nine? Ten? Eleven? Twelve? Fifteen? Fourteen. Now we're getting into areas that we did change, or there's some subtle changes or major changes. So let's look at Table 1, any issues with Table 1? Okay, I'm moving on to page sixteen, Table 2. If you go down to the bottom of Table 2, Don and I discovered, Item 41 talks about electrical generation projects. There was some additional words there. That didn't help. And do you remember what the words were?
To the definition of essential services.
Yeah. And if you go to the definition of essential services, the very last line in essential services, it's an exception, says, doesn't count generators. So the, the extra version didn't help it any, it was, it's from the definition. So all this is a, an item, electric generation projects. That simple. And that's, that's not new. And the, I don't think, the districts and who is assigned to is not new. It's just we took off that, that last statement out of the definition. Everybody understand?
It's the last line.
Back to definition and look at, good at.
Definition of essential services included, includes electric generation projects. It wasn't called out any.
If you go to page fifty-eight, and you read essential services as a definition, talks about all the things it is and isn't. Very last line says, additional excluded is the development of electrical generation projects. Additional excluded is the development of electrical generation project. That was sitting over there on that table next to Item 41, electric generation project. Didn't make sense, it didn't help, I guess is a better way to.
I don't know, it looks like we've still got underlined font on thirty-nine and forty.
Yep.
In the table.
Thank you.
Everybody understand what we did there? Okay with it? All right, let's move on to page fifteen. Sorry?
We can discuss this before now, I don't recall. Should there be a two at the end of that? Does that, should that be referred out to a separate ordinance?
Which, I'm sorry, which one you're talking about?
In Table 2, we just talked about.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, electric generation projects.
Have a footnote on it. Similar to solar energy generating system.
Okay, all right. Footnote's above?
Yeah, top of page seventeen.
On top of seventeen.
Or top of seventeen.
Oh, two, see separate standalone ordinance for these items.
All right, you're on three. Forty-two, sixteen.
The definition for electric.
No, and when we did all that, we need one. And kind of a low priority, but that was one of those, we've been working on definitions off and on, and this is one that we need to define. But what is it in your mind? Well, I thought more like the generator down by past ed. That's a pretty major project. I think it's for water pump, fuel pump. So, do we need this one at all? Well, we were having, when Don and I discussed it, we were having trouble with, what's an example of that? That's the best one I could come up with. So is there something in the future that would require this category? We didn't know.
There's, there's not a lot of them, I don't, I'm not aware of any of them in Maine, but down in New Jersey and New York, in larger metropolitan areas, they've got projects, plants they call peaker plants. And so they're designed to come online, it's a battery generating system for electricity, comes on at peak periods of demand. So at some point, you may see something like that in Maine. That would, that would likely.
They help out with the, if there's a shortage of generation?
Yes, yeah.
The backups, what they are.
And, and it may be a combination of that and propane or fossil generators, or a small, small generation station.
And that's what we were thinking about, but.
You're talking utility level.
Uh, grid level, but not necessarily utility.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What if you had a.
A local distribution.
Industry that hospitals. And.
I'll be following the central services.
Yeah, I agree. Oh, were you okay with leaving that the way it is and realize we got to do some work with it? Is that okay? All right, the question was about a note.
No footnote on that, correct?
Pardon? That's what I'm hearing. All right. Ready for seventeen, Table 3? On Table 3, on top of seventeen, those are all the numbers. We got rid of all the striking and, and labeling and all that. Made it simple. One question that we were talking earlier about was adding a bullet three underneath that table, referencing the non-conforming setbacks for seventy-five and a hundred foot. So that it would, it would enhance this table. You'd have to go reference it and see what the words are. But it's, and it's not in the table per se, but it's a non-conforming situation. And it kind of helps with what Don had to remind us about here in the last couple of weeks, the two scenarios.
I think I would suggest not bother breaking that in because this is a dimensional requirement by coming in and building something. Non-conforming. They're going to be building. It's existing. You know, when you're looking at the ordinance, you've got to kick back to non-conforming structure regulation, this is longer.
I guess what we wrestle with is what physically happened in the last couple of months. We had projects that, some of us missed it, Don brought it to our attention.
Yeah.
And we could have misled, we were misleading the people, I think, the applicant, applicants were misled.
Somebody. Oh, for the higher requirement.
We were looking at the thirty-five, and it should have been twenty-five or twenty.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, that's what, yeah. Well, that's the only thing we're trying to do is to just kind of help the process.
Well, okay, now, yeah, that's a case where, there are other places where it might be more stringent. Maybe, maybe that is where, I think the height is really the only.
It's all it is, that's all we're trying to.
The only one that.
That's the only thing we wanted to mention of them.
Can read the table now.
Basically, it was saying Articles, Article, excuse me, Subnote 3, see Article 2C for graduated height allowance for non-conforming structure, that's simple. Are you okay with that?
That works, yeah.
That's what you handed me this one. Okay, thank you. So you're going to make that addition?
Correct.
One thing, the other one we discovered is the two notes, one and two, they're already there, have been there. How do you get to them? I, I looked at the old ordinance and it's not there. If you look at the subnotes on that Table 3, you want setbacks for public and impervious area. Usually subnotes go to some place as a reference. At least these were just, these weren't subnotes, they were notes. I looked at two, two previous copies, they're not there.
To go to your road and street.
Yeah.
But again, if you look at the table, there's no, doesn't get you down there the subnote, that's all. Almost structure on subnote, you have a, a number up in the table or refers to it?
Under the title, Road Street, the header, Road Street's got a, it's got one on it.
You see it?
Big.
Why don't I see it?
Great next to street, the T in street.
Yeah.
It looks like a.
I see it, yeah. That's the one, now where's the two?
Two.
Right here, have you seen it? It's pervy.
I've.
I see them down below, yeah. And that's, that's where they apply? Okay, so.
Put them in there instead.
Well, if that's not consistent, what Don was, was toying with is where it says thirty-five, resource protect, uh, resource protection, shoreline, green protection, public water. Those would have threes next to it, thirty-five is. That makes sense?
Yeah.
That makes sense?
Yeah.
So that's what we'll do, Don, we'll put three next to it, just like you had it. Just like you had it. She, she's worked up a, a version of it, she did a three. Okay, thank you very much, straightening that out. Any else on that table? Jump into you. You're here to assist us with this, and we're on the page.
To hear you, what you were asking. You were in a microphone, like, I'm kind of like, no, not now, but at the meeting? Anyway, what's your question, because I wanted to answer it.
Know the purpose of what?
Does it change?
We changed it back, right?
I know, there was a lot of work done, I got here, and one of the things that I've had in editing this notes and gone over was to reduce lot size. We actually got the amendment forward. Comprehensive plan updated after the work started, and it's this. These lot sizes, the density in. Full water district. So all of those have been. In the, their districts that protect. Four of them. The comprehensive plan said, we don't want more density there. Part of the work that the board noted increasing density in those areas, so at that time, in order to not throw the baby out with the bathwater, they could have drilled dis一块 and not changed any of the lot size, along with the rest. I remember it. Not that we're not going to do it at all, but.
Board was not prepared to do that yet, I guess is the best answer I can give you.
And by incorporating, my recollection is, and by incorporating the references to the LD, we've increased density in other zones other than the resource protection zones by allowing clusters or, not necessarily clusters, but small tiny houses, those types of.
There's more work to be done.
Okay. I, I'm just kind of super in favor of reducing some of these. In residential is like forty. What the forty was. Thousand square foot. Just, just the newer technology they use. Subsurface. Bombing the footprint. Push down. I. Rich Street is the prime example of that. It's a little. And I, I get, I know that we talk about.
Mark, where would you suggest we change? What would you change it to? Next? That's the obvious one to you?
Yeah. I don't know.
Right now, you're proposing a change to without SOAR, general residential to thirty thousand, so it'd match with SOAR.
I think if you guys want to go through with what you're doing and know that we're going to.
Well, if it's one item, it behooves us to do it. I mean, vote on it, I guess is a better way to put it. If, if it's wholesale, look at it, then yeah, I would recommend we wait and go through it wholesale.
You've already.
Okay, leave it alone?
Yeah.
Prioritize it.
So let's make a note, let's make a note that that's. So let's make a note, let's make a note that that's, that's a desire and bring it back to board as one of our working points. Pat? Yes. Um, would, I would love to have both of you participate in that process when we have that.
I have no idea.
Mark, if you could help us with that when we're ready to do that, would appreciate it. As well as Pat. Okay. So you, you okay with that then, that approach? Any else on that page?
Oh, any village. Two run.
You have that, Don? You have that point?
No.
There's another point, village.
Oh, in the village, yes.
Without SOR.
It was just blank.
Okay, so that should be blanked in?
There's no minimum lots on it? Zero or blank?
Was blank.
Zero, no lot. Zero lot. I mean, I don't know, that could have been the case, but I don't think it was.
We all agree that should be blank.
With or without SOR, no.
Okay. Other items on seventeen? Eighteen? I mean, none, nineteen? Mark, you got something?
Ed, best management. Hay bales, they're, they're the greatest. This is a good time to bring up February, February nineteenth. John McLean coming back from main DEP for erosion. On point source. Welcome to come to it. December nineteenth, be a Thursday. Encourage anybody on the board, even a board of appeals to go to this class. If you're outside of our agency, I can get you in, but it costs a little bit of money.
Don, can you get that on our radar? Will we talk about it the next meeting?
Tuesday eight to three.
Not.
Lunch is served. It's a good day. Really goes over all of the best management practices. That's where the shoreline zoning erosion control certification.
Not to get off on another tangent, but slope control using mesh back. Slope control, is that in that hole? It's not here. I'm asking general questions. Slope control.
Depending on the scope of the slope, but ECM, which is erosion control mulch, is the best by far.
So that's in the, that's in the program?
Yeah.
That's it.
They will talk a lot about ECM. They talk about steel fences. Hay bales work, but they don't because things go under it. It's, it can be a third device.
That, that, I know that you, you've given me a book.
Yep.
State put out on water control.
They will get one and I have them also. Really goes over the best management practices. That's the term we really need to use. Because what you think looking from here at a site may not be the best thing, you know? So to tell, to tell a contractor, you need to use hay bales. Not necessarily the best advice because they could get there and go, you know what? I'd rather use a two foot, eighteen foot, I mean, a two foot by eighteen inch form of ECM. I'm going to, I'm going to be happy, so.
We just had three applications for non-conforming. That, that slope control would have been ideal application for fixing their problem or helping with their problem.
ECM would, or, and that's, if they're certified contractors, then they will. I also can mandate that also.
I'm talking long-term. I mean, not, not just for construction, long-term. These are bare areas that.
Viable option. Because the ECM turns into an organic material, a matter. The duff layer at the bottom of the forest breeds such a phenomenal planting, you know?
Part of my life, I made it.
There we go.
And part of my life, I used it and it's fantastic.
Saw something really quick. They're talking about doing a lot more live staking in, on the shoreline. So that's an interesting little live staking. Like literally take a tree and stick it underground. That's what we're using. Yeah.
Okay, let me get a.
Next, Don. Hope rap is turning the water warmer. That's why they're trying to get away.
Just want to make an observation. So on page nineteen, we were just talking about best management practices. One of the things the council brought up regarding having. They thought they were concerned that maybe that was onerous, but that was only moved. It's already, it was already in the ordinance. It was relocated. So it's the same.
We're going to make that point in the notes to them for their meeting next week.
Make my best efforts, I'll be here for them. I'll let them understand that it's not an option. It's not an option. It's not. It's mandated by.
Necessary.
EEP.
Any else on nineteen?
That would be where we're.
This is the latest, right?
Yes.
You can borrow this back. Like a back. When I say nineteen, I, I know you've got to go between yours, but they're pretty close. But this is what we're talking from right now. That help? Nineteen goes from nuisance conditions. Parking spaces. Any on nineteen?
She's above nuisance.
Could be.
Roughly from the state.
Pretty gray area. We can do it, doesn't need to be served.
That's right.
Come to that class on the nineteenth, talk to John McLean.
Let's say it's efficient. Once they've got the, that up.
They really should, they shouldn't look at it every day until the grass is growing.
Yeah, if you get, if you get storm events, those types of things where the steel fences can fail and start to fill up.
But they don't have to.
N, n, no, they don't have to be there all day.
Times it's on drive.
I, I will tell you, I push with my class to have contractors into the nail pounders to get certified because they're every day. They're there every day. So why not get certified? You can be that person. They're there until the grass is growing anyway. So I, getting them to show up.
They have to.
I've had a few, had a few.
I was at a site today and I've watched that site since day one and the, the nail pounder was a fellow, he, he was a contractor that presented to us, uh, night for the application for the owner. Owner was online, but, but, um, I'm impressed with what he knows and does and, and how he's, how he's managing it. And that's what, that's the model you want. That's the model we want, all said and done. So that's what we're trying to get to.
When you take the class, you'll see, you guys come to this class, EMPs are not rockets. It stopped the earth from going into the lake. Here's the best things to do it.
Nineteen? All right, we're moving on to twenty? Anything on twenty? Twenty-one? This is all parking. Twenty-three, or twenty-two? Twenty-three?
No, no, this.
To make sure like our friends cross our fingers, you know, internally if there were any, hopefully.
Twenty-four? Twenty-five? Was there any questions about signs at the, at, none? Okay. Must have been our meeting. Twenty-six? Twenty-seven? Mobile home parks? Twenty-eight? Twenty-nine? Pat? Two, two development cluster residential development starts.
We're looking, which page?
This is, uh, page twenty-eight, D, C. Two C, actually, two C. Says Shelby ten thousand, and in parentheses, two thousand square feet. And then fifteen hundred's okay, right? It's the ten thousand, two thou, which, which one should it be? We're going to fix that?
Ten to two.
Yeah, two thou, yep. You're ahead. Don? Change the ten to two. Thank you. That was probably in the old one, wasn't it? Twenty-eight? I'm moving to twenty. Wait a minute, I got turned around here. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine? On three.
Eight thousand?
I correct. I did, yes.
Yeah, that one, the one in your left hand should be right.
But you made that comment, I did correct it.
Thirty-one? I'm sorry?
Tell. Multi-family building. Lot size.
Oh, you're back on, see?
That was prior. Well, changed to two. That's what, wow, everything I tried.
Thirty-one. Camp sites. Pat, you were in the campsites. Push out here.
Once you get over the hundred Ks, you now have. They cannot meet the setbacks for legal year-round dwelling. By, no, they move right off in the winter. There for the summer and gone in the winter.
And they're diligent about putting it on, taking it off. That, that timeframe, it's amazing.
Campground now. Follow the rules and regulations for the campground. And here. Good person. No question of the unbuildable law.
Right.
Wondering if enforcement issue with that one?
Over. Yeah.
They're going to.
Makes sense.
Have dance.
Campground, any premises established for overnight use for two or more parties, the purpose of temporary camping, including but not limited to tents, recreational vehicles, other shelters.
Definition for individual private campgrounds as well.
One individual.
Where, there's a definition for that?
Yeah.
What's it under individual?
Lost. State plumbing inspecting. All that.
I think it's actually regulated by DHS, health engineering, the state health inspectors new campgrounds.
Go to page sixty, I'm sure.
Visits me quite often. Uh, it's bad.
Uh, it's bad.
Ed shared with me, page sixty-one, individual private campsite, an area of land which is not associated with the campground, but which is developed for repeated camping by only one group, not to exceed ten individuals, which involves site improvement, which may include but not limited to a gravel pad, parking area, fireplace, or tent platform.
Did look at the state regulations because we refer out to them and they're pretty clear.
Well, we know now.
You specifically, and you didn't. For the month, so I have all the campground, for the month. I think the state. Then make.
It's about there, right here, tent platform shall be set back one hundred feet, horizontal distance from the normal. I think we're talking about enforcement, we're talking about compliance, we're talking about uh, something illegal, uh, and we're talking about enforcement and/or on a board review, I mean, all those. Pat? That's just Joe.
You will, you could. I mean, it could come to you.
Okay, thirty-one?
Believe there is one.
Yep. Alright, thirty-two? Thirty-three? Thirty-four? Thirty-five? Thirty-six? Thirty-seven? Around thirty-five?
Yeah. We're talking about four thousand, uh, forty thousand square feet. Essential for dwelling unit within shoreline zone, but go back to the table. Table three. Well, it's saying eighty without sewer, so this is. Rarely do you have sewer on the shoreline.
You want lot, lot size?
Yeah. Well. It's not really. Not really a conflict, but it, uh. Sort of a little bit misleading because without sewer, that forty's gonna be eighty.
Are you saying it should say without sewer, with sewer rather?
Well, I guess, just raising a question is. They're gonna be. Again, sort of misleading like the thirty-five foot height thing. One place that says, this says blanket forty there, doesn't specify. In the table. Without sewer, again, which. Probably the majority of shoreline, shoreline zones are going to be.
Well, should there be note there that says with sewer? Parentheses?
I guess. Maybe.
Is that a big problem doing that, or? We're just confirming what the table already says, right? Okay, agree everybody? Alright. So, uh, we'll put a parentheses after that saying, uh.
In fact, probably all three categories right there would be. Minimum would be eighty according to the table. Minimum would be eighty for all three of them. Without sewer.
Well, when I read that, I. It was clear what A was, and then B went off to a specific application, C's a specific.
Right. Table, the table doesn't really break down, uh.
Those two.
Doesn't break down.
B and C, I don't know that all. Yeah. So it was congru- not congruent.
I, I think if I was to take the interpretation of that, I'd say, oh, that eighty applies across the board here. Without sewer.
Okay.
Just wanna reiterate, so on page thirty-five, references to lots on. Or with sewer, we're gonna add a reference to the.
What I, what I heard, saying on page thirty-five, underneath, uh, where you say forty thousand, sixty thousand, forty thousand, those are without, with, uh, with sewer, right? So if it applies to all three of them, why not just put parentheses on minimum lot area? Right underneath it, they all apply.
With, okay, yeah.
Rather than do three different places, just put underneath.
Yeah.
The, the header. That makes sense? Are you okay with that? Where were we? Thirty-seven?
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thirty-six, okay.
I was, I was pretty good up till that one, I was kinda. Filled.
You're on thirty-seven.
Massaging that in my mind.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven?
Well, that's a very.
Thirty-eight? Thirty-nine? Forty? Pat? Which page you on? Page thirty-eight?
Nowhere does it say. I have no jurisdiction on that. But max. Well. State does not find. I mean, if you get out into the mountain waterway. I don't have.
Did the mooring committee come up with anything on? Park lengths or, okay, okay.
Forty?
We took that right out of chapter one thousand, we didn't, we didn't.
The only reason, the only thing.
We didn't consider a public.
Page forty? Page forty-one? Forty-two? Forty-three? Forty-four? Forty-five? Now we're getting administrative stuff on forty-six.
Could I, could I raise a, just a quick question? It just come to mind looking at the top of, uh, page forty-four and numerous other places. There were, there were a lot of citations. In here that. Were. Were prior to the reorganization. Did all of those get checked?
Then the, within the citations were part of the local.
In our, in our ordinance, yeah.
I did, I did. It hasn't been, this is the proofing. So I attempted to help their.
Did you find any yet?
Uh, I, I don't know, I didn't check them again. I was looking right at the top of page forty-four. The C says, uh, standard section fourteen D, fourteen G, well, I, I.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
What section we're in. Uh, are we citing the right section?
You should. Send till someone tells me that. Hope they are, I tried.
Find one?
I didn't check them, no, I didn't.
Moving right along.
Looking, wanted to raise that question.
Thank you, Ed.
It's kind of a key when somebody gets picking one of these apart now. Citing the other place that.
We look forward to that, the feedback. Forty-five? Forty-six? Forty-seven? Forty-eight? Forty-nine? In this section, we did make a change about the, the appeals process. It was a setback issue, we, it's the appeals board first and then us second. That's in here, right? Okay. Yep. And the application also requiring a variance that they'll receive, E V eight for a little prior and. That was the big debate we had.
Anyway, yeah.
Spelling typo and resorting Board of Appeals.
Yeah, thank you.
Get S, S L, they'll receive. The last word, appeals.
Not great.
Forty-nine? Fifty? Fifty-one? Well, others didn't change anyway, right?
Yeah.
Fifty-two? Fifty-three? Now we're going into definition.
Question, I have, I did. Oh, I put on your desk, it was that you had talked about adding a definition. Which I did create a. But wanna have that on the up in the workshop when you. With other changes, you need to add a definition. So the discussions moving, taking shoreline zone and saying shore area. Just wanna note that.
All thing, and maybe irrelevant, but when Brent and I were trying, before the meeting, we were trying to go from the notes. And at the time, we're doing exercise around the table of content. And. We were trying to, trying to find campsite. And Ed, Ed showed us where it was, individual private campsite.
In the definition?
Yeah. I'm from the village that. Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's my point.
Individual. You move it, that's not a substantive.
Or you could just say campsite and say reference individual private campsite. Uh. To me, that would be, that wouldn't change anything, it's just a reference. That makes sense? So what I'm proposing is under, on page fifty-five, near campground, you'd put down campsite, and then reference individual private campsite. We weren't changing it, it's just another note to get there, I guess. Okay? Alright, uh, fifty-five? Fifty-six? Fifty-seven? Fifty-eight? Fifty-nine? Sixty? It was interesting to me to find the table for. Lake heights, or water body heights and definitions. Been there forever, I would say, but. And now, I now know where to go find it.
It's the number that, that's the number that they use when they're doing, um, shoreline, they're in. If to bring it up to floodplain code, that's the one foot above that level. Whatever body of water.
Right, we just had three of those, same meeting.
Three hundred years.
Hundred years.
Three one hundred years.
On the farming. One of the things we, we were questioning is the flood zone. Sixty-one? Sixty-two? Sixty-three? Sixty-four? Sixty-five? Sixty-six? Sixty-seven? Sixty-eight? Last but not least, sixty-nine?
Do, do we even need volume of structure anymore?
No.
Page sixty-eight?
Are there instances where we'd be looking at old applications? Is there any instances where, that would be needed if you were? We don't want anything new.
I mean, there's some cases that are out there that did use volume. But I don't know that we, we're not ever gonna use it again. But, I mean, you can leave it, it's not gonna hurt anything.
It's not hurting anything.
Wait, Ed?
My quick story, I made a, I made a, uh. A spreadsheet that had the calculations in it. Every time I changed a dimension or an angle or a slope, it would automatically upgrade by thirty percent.
Volume is horrible.
And I had to do volume and square footage on my property, so I just.
I have a part, I have a quiz I gotta go take.
Thank you, Mark, and you're gonna try to make Monday night? Alright, you're gonna try to make it Monday night? Okay, uh, that completes our review of the document. You have the, you have the minor changes, right?
Ian, I'm from meeting on Monday. If there are non-substantive changes though, now's the time to poke holes in it, like you can see, like the formatting errors are killing. Doesn't, you know, make sense. As long as it's not too. Those changes can still be incorporated, so anything that we used to. They can, they can still be added again.
Uh, thank Pat for participating tonight. Ed?
Also, thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve this going back to the council for second look next Monday night.
After you do that, would you mind looking at, um, the memo, not quite memo format, but just how I revise things in there?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept any of the edits that we made tonight and move the zoning ordinance back on to the town council for their review.
Discussion? All in favor? Oath? The vote? You're welcome, Lieutenant. You're welcome to attend Monday night.
I might also. See what's going on.
You getting it?
Yeah. Anything else?
They, they tabled it and, um, we kept it on there. So I couldn't get a memo to Anthony.
Town Council.
Based on.
After 1,000.
Okay, Dawn?
So.
Memo?
The memo in front of you.
This is, uh. This is the draft, November 26.
Yeah, I started to summarize what had happened at the meeting, and then here are the things that were addressed, and basically, um, wanted to know if there was clarity in Want to hear, this is drafted at the top?
Yeah.
So I just put a couple sentences saying, at the meeting. Here are the things. For, for Lincoln. And I really didn't draw it together.
Know they're looking at. They want to put a right odd copy, and then we want to put this set of notes that you generated, so they understand you responded to their questions, Pat gone through it page by page, wherever, and get away with the, like we did tonight, the strikes, the red lines, all that, the relocation effort where we moved it, rid of all that, looks like it's going to work. That's what I'm going to tell them Monday night. Does he answer your question? Basically, a lot of it was moved, restructured the ordinance, worth things that were changed, those should be on. Look to prove it, plus, how, how is them wanting to change? We're presenting to them what we think should.
The overall tone of the meeting, how did they, how did they receive the document and the questioning?
I think, I don't think they, I don't think they had a preview, and I think they were going through it that night, if that's the question you're asking, that's my sense. And they were throwing questions at us, um, and, and Pat, Pat was asking questions, she had probably the longest list of questions anybody, most of them were individual questions from the person on the council. Pat had the most comprehensive, that's why, I hope you don't mind, I asked her to sit with us, get it down, so that, um, she may still have some issues with things we haven't done, but she understands why we did what we did, and should be a help, I think, be a help. No, 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 she was a public.
She's a realtor.
I knew that part. She's got real world experience in some of these things.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
And I won't say, uh, so, I think, I asked Dawn to invite her tonight, make sure she came and helped us, if she could, as well as Ed, to help us.
No, well, I guess the only thing, um, I was going to guess, if town council starts picking at things again, sort of like they did last, really don't know how to quantify it, but, and a lot of what they pick out, as chapter, as chapter 1,000 environment, we can't back on, whether you have to do that on a case by case basis like you did here, raise that question, just say, 1,000. Yeah, and, and that's a lot of, a lot of that was, uh, that chapter 1,000. That's why we actually had to do the reorg, because, Ed, we took our ordinance, kind of adopted chapter 1,000 on. Almost verbatim, and that's why we ended up with some duplication of language, some language over here that should apply universally and. And in that shuffle, I actually dropped out of four categories.
Hold shot with that? Hold shot with that feedback? Dawn?
I linked to this.
Provide one card. Pages?
About 50 pages.
Yeah. Seven, I would say each one, 50.
Okay. I did hyperlink the water bodies.
Didn't think.
Weren't even changed, they were questioning.
I think it was confusing. Let's move on to the agenda. FOAA, you want a reminder there?
On the second? And then on the fourth, I don't know. They have the media center there.
On your son up before, right? That's what she's talking about, that. 32, 6. How many folks can make, how many folks can make them Monday night? Other business?
Thank you, Ed, appreciate it very much.
See you again.
Um, any other business? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Chairman will make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor? All in favor? I oppose.